City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Miller. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Holmes. Alderman Tendem. Alderman Revel. Alderman Rainey. Eight to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, April 18, 2016, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is Mayor's Public Announcements and Proclamations, and I have none this evening. City Manager, do you have announcements?
May I, Mayor, members of the council, just to mention that Alderman Tendem is ill this evening, and that is why he's not here. Hopefully, he'll be feeling better soon.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications?
I have none this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Could someone bring me the sign-up sheets for public comment? Thank you very much.
No problem.
Mr. Risky, and then Mr. Nichol.
Recently, somebody stole my Bernie Sanders signs from my property. The parallels of national politics and local government are unfortunately too similar to ignore. The lack of integrity and self-serving nature of public officials, as well as the continued mistakes by government employees at all levels, has the majority of citizens disgusted. By the way, what is the real story on Dave's Italian Kitchen closing? Why would a successful business in town close and not renew its liquor license? As I stated at the last council meeting, I noticed that posted note on its door that they felt the city had been inept in their handling of their liquor license. I suspect the city had a role in this, and of course, I'd like to know what that role was, and I think many others in town. My daughter told me there's quite a bit of chatter on Facebook about this. I think it's very interesting. But let's get on to Robert Crown. Unfortunately, as a process, it lacks integrity too, and appears to be a mess. By the lack of integrity here, I don't think the process really tells me much. When I was looking on the city website at the drawings, they didn't make a lot of sense, and there's no data there that explains anything. Some on the council have used Robert Crown to pretend we need to correct this or we can't deal with Harley Clark, which to me is very interesting. Maybe it's a fabrication, but then again, if we're city staff unable to handle many things, it's possible they can't handle too many things at once. Does anyone on the city council with any real and thinks that anyone in this community that's well-to-do with intelligence is going to lead this process with the data you've given them to basically go out and do anything and ask people for money? I think it's rather ridiculous. They'll be immediately questioned and challenged on this whole thing. The financial mess of this, unfortunately, is just like the water utility, where we cannot show a coherent business plan. And then I think there's, as some aldermen I heard recently at this last meeting that just occurred, we don't need to keep spending monies on study, but staff needs to be doing things that they don't appear to be able to do. And unfortunately, I really, there's an attitude here that donors are going to fund this and taxpayers are going to fund this, but I'd like to know who's going to fund this that's going to use this. What has Wally done to come up with a fee structure to increase the cost of this to the users? So they're going to fund this. Maybe some of these people that want two sheets of ice might not want two sheets of ice if they're going to have to pay for it, and their fees are going to go up 30% or 50%. So I mean, that hasn't even been discussed, just like the fact we don't have a recreational plan for the city. A lot of these things aren't being discussed. And when I looked at what I see at Robert Crown, I don't see things that should be there. There's no real plan other than to duplicate everything that's there. And then that's not really good planning. Of course, we don't have a recreation plan. That is part of the problem here. So anyway, I guess I will close on this. You know, there's so many things that are on plan, like the Howard Street Theater. We could talk about that, and now we're looking at a $300,000 architectural fee on that versus $40,000 the council approved. Everything here is always a mess. So I mean, I think when you go into something like this, you have a lot of work to do to fix it, to ask people in the community to go support this, especially people that are affluent, that are going to put on the hook, because they're not going to want to be on the hook for this. They're not going to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nichol?
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite, for hearing what I pretty much have to say that I want the broader city to hear. My name is John Nichol. I live at 1719 Lee. I've been a homeowner at that address for about 30 years. It's immediately adjacent to Crown Park on the north side, Lee Street being the north side of the park. Obviously, whatever happens at that park affects the quality of my life and property values. So I want to speak about the two plans. Basically, they look pretty good. I just want to make one thing or a couple of things clear. Everybody wants to come to that park and tell you what they want, but they're there for a few hours every week. I live there 24/7, and I know what goes on there probably better than anybody in the city. And I want you to listen, and I would like the park to listen more, because the last time that they had a big plan to change things, there was a big sign, by the way, that faced my house, and they ripped up a largely sod field and put up a big dirt field. You know, I'll let you live across the street from the dirt field. I mean, it's never been maintained well, and both plans have two big dirt fields. I don't know if that's really what's going to happen. I know I'm adding, I assume that later on, I'm kind of talking before what's on the agenda, the Robert Crown, but please irrigate it, do something, have someone be proactive, and stop the dust. I think my neighbors along Lee Street have a general concern that we do not want to become the utility entrance to a large structure. I'm hearing that Plan A, which is to refurbish the existing one, the lesser costly plan, please keep it on the footprint. Do not yield to the skating interests who are going to say, oh, why don't you push that more towards Lee Street so we can keep skating for a year or something? I do not want a brick wall closer to my house. I do not want an ice compressor closer to my house. I bought it, and they were there. I can live with them where they are. But I think that you are going to destabilize that neighborhood if you move buildings north. So I think it looks okay. I just want it to be said that because special interests, you know, youth baseball, softball, flag football, tackle football, you know, everybody, we are probably the best neighbors in the city of Evanston. We don't complain much. We've got parking, trash issues, you probably never heard about it. It is a fun place to live. It is an active place. It's a carnival. But, you know, and we're wonderful neighbors. Take care of us. Remember us. And so I can live with either plan, and I think it's important to anybody that, you know, if you're looking for donors, you know, if the neighbors like it, I think that should be important. You talked about the north downtown area. Well, I'm a neighbor of the Robert Crown area, and I represent, I have another neighbor who's here, and so the dust issue has been a real problem. Please, we're concerned, you know, the Lee Dodge intersection is not a good intersection. If you put a parking lot in there, that would be with the more expensive plan. You're going to have an issue there. I know these are things that you're going to work out later, but listen to us, meet with us. We can help be problem solvers. But please, keep the building where it is or put it where you have it planned. There's some things that we would like to have in there, but I don't think it's fair for me to speak for everybody that's there.
Thank you. I do need you to wrap up. Thank you. All right. Alderman Rainey, the consent agenda. I guess we have minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The minutes of the council meeting of April 11, 2016. Move or approve?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. City Manager, we have special order of business.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Mr. Lyons is here with an update regarding our work with Robert Crown Center. Mr. Lyons?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, Honorable Clerk Green, Mr. City Manager Marty Lyons, Assistant City Manager and CFO. We are here tonight to go through our next steps regarding the Robert Crown Community Center. I am not going to be doing much of the speaking tonight. I'm going to be introducing a lot of different folks to speak on behalf of the Robert Crown Center. First, we're going to have Lawrence Humphries, Hemingway, Hemingway, our new Parks Recreation Community Services Director, followed by Karen Dernsick Lyons, the library director, and then followed by Michael Hap and Laura Maines-Akins from CCS, our fundraisers. They have the bulk of the presentation tonight, and I will then wrap up with next steps. And next steps are going to take us all the way through into 2017. So without further ado, Mr. Hemingway, not Humphries.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Clerk Green, City Manager, thank you for this opportunity. My presentation is brief. This is my first time using the system, so hopefully I get this right. Let's go to the first slide. All right. So for me, it's going to be, you know, you'll see three slides. They'll talk to you about programmatic overview where we currently stand, a physical plant overview, and then kind of what we want to see in the long term. The first slide here speaks to some programmatic information, just so you guys are aware. You take a look, we currently have over 3,000 athletic registrations, another 3,000 in ice program activities and participants, over 300 summer camp registrants, and another 150 pre- and after-school programs, students. Some of the community activities, as you can see, we had, Robert Crown saw over 140,000 visitors in 2015 alone. We get another 14,500 lunches through our lunch program served. You see the number of public skating participants. We also gave out over 78,000 equivalents in scholarships to the center last season, and almost over, almost 300 meetings held, community meetings held in the facility. So that's a programmatic overview of what currently takes place in Robert Crown. Here is a look at the physical issues of the facility. The ice refrigeration system and other critical systems are beyond their life expectancy. The building is done, I believe, built right prior before the ADA compliance came into existence, so the building is not ADA compliant. There's inadequate space. Because of all the user ships on the previous slides, you can see, we, this building is used right now in its capacity, so we don't have adequate programming space or locker rooms to address the programs. We currently got a one-and-a-half sheet of ice, but the demand is for more. And we have quite a few compliance challenges when it comes to our pre- and after-school program. For example, the restroom facilities, the way they're currently constructed, the young people have to step up onto stool, onto a little step to get access to the sinks. They weren't built with those kind of participants in mind. The bathrooms, we share the licensed childcare facility there. We sharing bathrooms with the public. That's, you know, and the licensee agency understands that based on the way the center is built, but most licensing facilities have their own restroom facilities. And another third thing is you have, our doors currently don't have emergency locks or automatic locks in the childcare facility. So these are some of the things that we're currently, challenges at the existing facility. Where we would like to go, a new state-of-the-art center would address the opportunities to maximize outdoor programming capabilities. Where the building is currently laid out on the campus, if it was adjusted to one of the corners, it could maximize outdoor programming opportunity. We allow for the new facility can address some green initiatives and start to save energies from that perspective. You take a look at, we could provide adequate programming space in terms of adequate locker rooms, adequate classroom space, and then also, we can start to meet some of the needs of our current demand and then as well as in the future. At this time, I'm going to bring up your next speaker will be Ms. Karen Lyons, the Director of Evanston Library.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Clerk Green, and City Manager Bob Kowitz. On the screen right now is one of the maps that I worked with the city to create based upon census data. We know that adjacencies and transportation and ease of access all affect the usage. Our three libraries that we have now receive more than 600,000 in-person visits every year. Libraries are placed for early learning, for childhood literacy, for teens to gather and explore, and for the community to come together. And on this map, the density is around the five-to-17-year-old population, and you'll see that there are quite a few younger children and teens in the area that would be within the dotted circle which represents Robert Crown. And it fills a gap that we've identified, and it fills a gap very nicely, and it brings library service to a location that our citizens and families already are going. So to me, it just makes so much sense to leverage that facility and add 5,000 new feet of library space. Because we'll be co-located, we can really use that 5,004 square feet for libraries and do a lot of programming for all ages. I believe in data-driven decisions and in involving our community, and so I wanted to do a baseline community-wide survey before we even began construction. I will give you copies of our community-wide survey because it certainly went beyond Robert Crown, but we did talk about Robert Crown, and that surprisingly, residents in 2, 5, 8, and 9 were very, very likely to use the library and very interested because of its adjacencies, as well as our Spanish-speaking residents. And finally, this is a slide that represents part of our annual report, but safe and collaborative spaces and a bridge for the digital divide are important parts of what the library does each day, and we certainly look forward to having Robert Crown be an important part of our service delivery footprint, a great addition, and I'm going to give you copies of both of our survey results and our annual report to give you some more in-depth information. But we're excited about bringing the library to Robert Crown, and I'm especially excited that I no longer have to say "and" library. We are a part of this redevelopment, and we look forward to being a good partner. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager Bob Kowitz, Clerk Green, thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. My name is Michael Hap. I am with CCS Fundraising. I am here tonight with my colleague Laura Akins. It was CCS's pleasure to partner with the city and library on a campaign planning study this past fall, and we are very excited to be once again engaged to help conduct a robust fundraising campaign. I'd like to take just a few minutes of your time to present a basic outline of our campaign plan, which is already underway. A summary of this plan has been provided to the council in tonight's meeting materials. The key objectives of our plan are to raise our working goal of $3 to $5 million through individual gifts, as recommended in the planning study, as well as to lead the cultivation and solicitation of lead gifts well above and beyond that goal. To demonstrate the positive impact this project will have for the local community. To cultivate donors and instill confidence in the facility's long-term maintenance plan. To establish an independent charitable foundation to oversee ongoing fundraising for the facility's care after this campaign concludes. And to engage all constituencies of the Parks Department, the library, the city, and the entire region. Our leadership structure for this campaign will consist of a core team, to include a chair or co-chairs, anchoring an executive cabinet, which will grow to include as many as 20 members. Supporting the work of this cabinet will be public endorsers, elected officials, local businesses, well-known citizens who can lend their name and goodwill to the initiative. During the final public stages, the campaign will make use of subcommittees based on Yurzu groups and other constituencies. The chairs of these groups will join and serve on the executive cabinet. In our final study report, CCS recommended a 12- to 24-month fundraising campaign, the actual timetable to be determined by the leadership team. This illustration shows an 18-month timeline broken down by phase. Regardless of overall length, the campaign will function in four overlapping phases: planning, leadership gifts, major gifts, and community gifts, also referred to as the public phase. This approach enables the campaign to build momentum by first reaching out to those families and individuals in a position to consider the largest request. Though as a public initiative, the entire campaign will be open information, the lead and major gift phases will concentrate more on private conversations. In our experience, this approach leads to the most gifts and the most generous gifts and the most successful campaigns. The final phase is the period that will feature broad publicity and community outreach. We're currently hard at work in the planning phase, and we have in fact begun the leadership gifts phase. This sample table of gifts details how the campaign can surpass a stretch goal of $5 million in gifts from the community, and shows how many prospects the team would need to identify, cultivate, and make requests of at all levels to ensure the best possible chance of success. In addition to aggressively pursuing lead gift opportunities above and beyond this goal, CCS will use this tool to ensure the campaign is approaching enough prospective donors and securing enough gifts at each level during the campaign. Throughout the campaign, but particularly during the solicitation of lead and major gifts, the campaign will offer naming opportunities, appropriate naming opportunities to recognize donors generosity. Some examples of opportunities the leadership team may choose to offer are listed here. As you can see, these opportunities could include individual features of the reimagined facility, such as the library or the gym or an ice rink. At CCS, we continually think in terms of case, leadership, prospects, and plan, and that mindset informs our day-to-day management and direction of fundraising campaigns. Highlighting our progress thus far, to date, we have developed compelling customizable gift request materials for use in lead gift conversations. We've identified certain core leaders and several executive cabinet members. We have constructed an ever-growing database of potential supporters and conducted extensive research on top prospects, and we've conducted briefing visits with potential leadership donors and local businesses. So the next steps in each of these key areas are to improve and enhance our printed materials as more project details become available and more detailed renderings emerge, to assemble and train our core leaders and executive cabinet, and to gather on a regular basis beginning this week, to grow and strengthen that prospect database and assign top prospect solicitations, and to formalize our top leadership gift requests and secure gifts from all of our key volunteer leaders. With that, I thank you for your time. Laura and I are happy to answer any questions regarding the fundraising efforts and campaign plan, either now or after the meeting will be available as well.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, I've got one. Have you contacted Shawnee Davis?
With due respect, Madam Mayor, we tend in public forums not to specifically reference conversations with potential donors. Laura, would you?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one more slide, but before I, well, actually, I will do that slide and then do an introduction of some final folks. So what are we talking about? In very, in one slide alone, what we're talking about is to raise the funds. I thought the diagram that showed the, what we're going to be doing through July is going to be that major, and then through another two to three months after that, the next step, and so on. So we have a very busy timeline in 2016 for fundraising. We're going to then, yes?
I wasn't sure where my question fit, but I just can't hold it in any longer. When you're preparing these gift requests, which it sounds like we've begun doing, what are you telling people we're doing? Are you telling people we're building a new, I mean, we building a new building? Are we rehabbing the current building? I did read the one section that said you're telling, we're going to tell donors if we don't raise enough money, we're going to rehab and not build. But what are the final numbers that you're talking to people about in terms of the overall costs? Overall costs for new construction, overall costs for renovation? I looked back in the council on the city's website, and the 2014 plan, I mean, is that the basis for?
Yes, it is. Alderman Rainey, members of council, the basis would be just over $18 million for a renovated Crown and $30 million for a new Crown.
But we share that with the potential donors. I mean, they get the big picture, right?
I believe, they get the big picture without those dollars attached. We're very clear that we're going to fundraise towards a new facility, trying to raise enough money for a new facility, but then we will also state clearly, because we have, and this is not just a city of Evanston way of trying to do fundraising that they might not do for not-for-profits. CCS has made it very clear that they always are transparent with donors that, of what they're funding for. So the goal is X, and if the goal is not met, major donors have the opportunity to withdraw.
Well, it appears, though, that the goal is $5 million plus for donors, right?
That is what was, that wasn't the goal. That's what they felt was out there from the feasibility study.
Okay. But the goal is, the cost of the total project is going to be $30 million or more or less if we do an, are those materials included in the fundraising?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I'm just wondering.
And we would also, as a part of this, CCS could meet with aldermen on an individual basis to go through the gift-giving process.
Well, as soon as the compensation committee finishes, we'll probably be in a better position to make our gifts.
With that, we, as noted in the, thank you, that's very hard to follow, Alderman Rainey, we will be coming back quarterly. Alderman Reiny, um, we will be coming back quarterly to update the council on where we're at, because before we're done with total fundraising, we will need to begin the process of design. I, I will tell you, based on all of our meetings, that, uh, by the end of the year, while we might still have eight months of fundraising, we will have, uh, seven, 80 to 90 percent of an idea of how much money we're going to raise, because the major gifts tell that tale. So, we will know approximately how much, and then can chart our course towards the end of the year, um, where we're going, renovation or a new facility. But I, I, I put this out there just so we don't have expectations. We're still talking about, um, July 1st at the very earliest for construction, and more likely, uh, because we'll have to do design for six months of, of the facility. We have concept drawings, but not detailed drawings, and those will take months to produce. So, I just wanna make sure we set that expectation. Uh, and if we don't have any other questions, I do want to introduce, um, three individuals, not in their, uh, the role that you would see them, but now as volunteers on the committee. Dan Stein, Michael Tannen, and David Hodgman have all, they're all volunteers to be a part of the leadership team. So, you know them as, uh, as the library, um, board president, the Parks Board President, uh, President of the, um, Foundation, the Parks Foundation, but they're all stepping up to be a part of this process in particular. Gentlemen, if you'd like to add anything, um, feel free, you're not constrained, but it's up to you. We always let volunteers talk at the council.
It's simply my favorite thing to do. Hello, everyone, I'm Daniel Stein. I'm the current President of Parks and Rec Board. I wanna thank everyone in council and, and Wally and Liz, um, for their support of this very, very important, um, project. I, everyone I talk to is very, very excited. There, there's a momentum that's been building, there's frustration that we've been talking about it for, for 15 years, and, and now is the time. So, I think CCS has been a great investment. Um, they're gonna teach us how to, how to raise the funds, and I think that it's really, it's gonna happen this time. So, it, it, again, um, I get a little frustrated when people don't understand the difference between visioning documents and, and, and actual renderings. I mean, everything you're looking at is visioning. Really, community support is key. We have lots of constituent groups that we're talking to, and again, it's gonna be a wonderful, wonderful, um, it's the heart of Evanston. I, I really look at the Crown Center has, for years, been incredibly important. I like the, the man who lives next door to it, really is a special place, and I think that it'll continue to be that way. So, I just wanna thank everybody, and I'm always available to talk about the Crown Center. That's my, my two cents for tonight.
Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Tannen, and I'm President of the Evanston Public Library Board, and I'll be extremely brief. The library board is all-in on this project. We've been talking about it for months. We have been planning for it for months. A library in the Robert Crown Center comports with our strategic plan and our visioning statement and everything we wanna do. We've been talking about this for a long time. We're putting it on our agenda every month. Myself and Sandra Smith, who went to school with Peter Braithwaite, I believe, are gonna be volunteering, uh, on this special committee to get this thing off the ground, spades in the ground, and we are gonna put our money where our mouth is. We are slated for $2.5 million. We believe we have demonstrated a special prowess in raising money based on the beauty and necessity of public libraries generally and in this city, and we are going to be there. We are going to be partners with you, and we're extremely excited. The board is all-in, and we think that this collaboration is going to work, and as Dan said, is taking hold and spreading momentum quickly. So, thank you all for listening, and we're very optimistic.
Thank you.
And, Madam Mayor, I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, address one issue, and that is the, um, the Infrastructure Maintenance Fund. We've heard from a variety of sources, both donors and also, uh, Members of Council, all about maintaining, uh, our structure. So, as we go forward with this, um, this project, one of the things to create, and it won't be in the next two months, it won't, we won't need it for another year, but the creation of an Infrastructure Maintenance Fund dedicated to maintaining this structure. This will not be the first one. The library is actually going down that path now. So, um, a, a good precedent to set and a great way to point out that, uh, what will be built will last another 40 years. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I just wanna give a big thank you and shout-out to everyone. There's been a lot of work, energy, and effort put in behind the scenes to get us to this point. Hours and hours and hours of volunteer time, commitment, dedication, conversations, meetings. So, that's, I just wanna express my sincere gratitude and appreciation for all of that time, effort, and energy, and I'm excited this is gonna be a great project, and, uh, literally looking forward to it. So, thanks again.
Uh, thank you. Alderman Miller?
I'll, I'll second Alderman Wilson's thank-yous, but also, Marty, just regarding the design timeline that you had up there as well, looking at fourth quarter 2016 for the design phase. So, I'm looking at the campaign plan and the proposed phases, and that kinda gets us, it cuts off the leadership gift phases, in a sense, and gets you right into the major gifts phase of this, the fundraising. So, will we be able to? I, I think this might just be a little bit aggressive, is what I'm trying to say, considering in the middle of fundraising. Will we be able to actually figure out, you know, designing when we're not sure about our major gifts is kinda tough, and my, my thoughts on it, if you see what I'm saying. Slide, uh, 10, yeah.
It is a little aggressive, the, um, and design will probably not be a one-stop-shop, meaning that, uh, we do plan on coming out with further documentation to help in the fundraising, um, but this was contemplated where, if you see December, we're at the, um, oh, about the six or seven-month mark on the major gifts, uh, phase as far as starting design. So, you're right, it does cut it off. You're, you had the, the schedule correct.
Well, and I'm just, you know, also getting into 2017, if we start construction later in the year, obviously, it gets with construction, it makes it tougher to actually complete, et cetera. So, I'm just wondering kinda how this will all fit. Obviously, we can't start construction in September, October, because we worry about the winter, et cetera. So, I mean, is it, is that design and construction time plan feasible, given the fundraising constraints?
Uh, it, it is aggressive, so I will, uh, agree with you there. So, is, I don't know if it's feasible or not. We will know a lot more come August, September, after we've gone through the first phase, 'cause that will tell, uh, we've been told for the last three months that we'll know a lot from the very beginning of the fundraising, um, campaign. And we will come back to the council every 90 days to say, "Here's a, a better look at our schedule."
Uh, thank you, Alderman Reiny. I might have missed this. Marty, can you tell me, have we set a drop-dead date for determining which path we're going to take?
No, we have not.
In terms of fundraising?
We have not.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. In terms of fundraising?
Well, are we going to, if we don't raise a certain amount of money, then we're going to go to renovation versus new construction? Is that right?
Correct. And I think that's going to be at the end of this year, we're going to have a status report to decide where we're at. So, that gives us, um, seven to eight months of time to see how, how we're doing and whether or not we wish to, uh, have a, a different approach.
When we reach that point, and I know everybody, we're gonna probably raise $20 million, I'm not sure, but, let's say, let's say, just a worst-case scenario, we don't raise, generate the private donations to go forward with new construction. Has the committee ever discussed, and I've discussed this with one member of the committee, going to a referendum, a binding referendum to the community, asking them, "Would you be willing to support the building of a new Robert Crown?" With, you know, selling bonds?
No, the committee didn't go into referendum discussion. I think that would be the purview of the council. Um, that, and, uh, we will have certainly all of the information that is generated for a fundraising campaign can be utilized on an informational campaign, but roles change drastically as soon as you go to that referendum.
No, of course, it gets very political and, 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 but it would, it, we would be renovating the building anyway at that point. I mean, that would be the decision, the path we'd be on at that point. However, we could say, "We're going to make one more effort at building a new building" and go to the public and ask them.
Yes, that, and that's, and the reason for the, the nature of the schedule being as aggressive as we can is the, uh, condition of the facility.
Yeah.
That we do not want a four-inch lake, and, and nor do we wish to spend the two or three million dollars on a new ice system in an old facility.
But I heard that very speech long before you were hired by the city.
Yes, back in about '02 or so, yes, so.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Alderman Reiny really asked the question I was gonna ask, 'cause I'm, I'm, I'm a very visual person, and I'm still trying to visualize how we're gonna do this if we, if we don't know what we're doing. And I'm just being honest, I, I, I just want us to get to the end of the year and decide which we're gonna do, one or the other. And I think that that would make it much clearer, uh, even to the public. And when you mentioned, I hadn't thought about the referendum part, Alderman Reiny, but there's a timeline and stuff of that, so it would have to be for the next April election, right?
November? I think it, we're, there's, that, that's why I thought about it. There's a big election in November.
I know there's a big election in November, but you still have to get it on the ballot.
But I think there's time.
Oh, okay.
I think there's time.
It's getting, I think?
But I, I know that's a crazy wild idea to ask people how they feel about spending $30 million, but I just thought it might be something that would resonate with others.
I hadn't even thought about November, I was thinking about next April. I was thinking that you're talking about that.
I don't want it on that one. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Seeing no lights for further discussion, I, I think it's exciting that we are pretty much irrevocably committed to actually having a new Robert Crown, whether rehab new or new-new, I don't know, but instead of having plans, we're gonna have shovels hit the ground. All right, call of the wards. Alderman Miller?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder that this Friday, uh, April 22nd, starting at 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, is the Procurement 101, uh, here at the City of Evanston in, in the, uh, parasol room.
Thank you. Alderman Winn?
Uh, yes, a reminder that there will be a third ward town hall meeting on Thursday, May 5th, at Lincoln School from 7:00 to 9:30, excuse me, 7:00 to 8:30.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Uh, another reminder that there is the, um, Fountain Square meeting or, um, session, whatever you wanna call it, uh, the 28th at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder that we're having this fantastic training session on Thursday night at the fifth ward meeting on block clubs and neighborhood watches. Everybody's welcome.
Thank you. Alderman Ravel?
Uh, what I have to say is gonna sound familiar, I think, to my colleagues. There are a number of alleys in the seventh ward that are in deplorable condition and gonna be getting worse as we have our more frequent intense rainstorms predicted with climate change. There are neighbors along three different alleys in the ward that are ready to proceed with the process to get their alleys paved, uh, but the 2016 and 2017 city funding is already committed, and now there's even a moratorium on accepting new, uh, petitions for 2018. So, I would like to ask staff to provide some options for the council to consider that would address the situation and enable our residents to get their alleys paved in a more timely fashion. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Alderman Reiny? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wednesday night at 6:00 p.m., uh, the second meeting of the Neighborhood Integrity Committee Considerate, Considering Amendments to the Ordinance. Thank you. Uh, Alderman Reiny?
Can you repeat that, please?
On Wednesday at 6:00 p.m., the second meeting of the Neighborhood Integrity Ordinance Amendment Committee, Subcommittee is meeting, second meeting. Thank you very much. We do not, I believe, have an executive session?
We do not.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So move.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the ayes have it.